Start with introduction of employees.
Yes, I have a bunch of new employees to introduce to the board. It has actually been quite a while since we've had some highway employees in front of the board. I know three, four, four years worth of new employees. Actually, we've even lost some new ones in this time period. But it's a nice day out and we don't have snow to plow or roads to fix. Besides some potholes, but I thought it'd be a good day for the introduction of some new employees.
Excellent.
So I guess if you'd stand and just introduce yourself, your name, and then what shop you work out of. That's it.
Feel free to throw anything else to with background if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Scott.
Okay, very good. Welcome, Scott.
Uh, Bob Kell, I work out of the Pinewood shop.
Thanks, Bob.
Here's Ilo, the Bemidji shop.
Okay, welcome Bradley.
Greg Doobeyer made us three out of the O'Brien shop.
Okay.
Hey, Dolphy, the Bemidji shop.
Hey, Kenny.
Oh, Wes Bassett on the Bemidji shop.
Hey, Wes.
Kyle Langout, out of the Pinewood shop.
Yeah.
Scott Smurling, Pinewood shop.
Hey, Scott. Very good, welcome. I hope that all of you plan to make it ten, make it your tenure here, so welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah, I know. Are there any other new employees? Okay, if not, identify any future work meeting topics.
Aaron, um, I'd like to get an update on where we're at with the first floor Health and Human Services remodel.
Okay. And maybe, maybe in a catch with that is if there's any progress on daycare.
Yeah, yep. That would be good too.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to community health board update. Anne.
Well, I'd like to kick off our community health board meeting with some introductions. One, you all know me, I'm Anne Lynn South, I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. But I want to introduce you to our new Public Health Division Director, Amy Bowles. Amy started with us on April tenth and we're extremely excited to have her on board. So Amy, if you'd like to say a few things and introduce yourself, right ahead.
Well, first, I'd just like to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve our community and for Beltrami County as your Public Health Board Director. And then I just want to say I've had a great first week and I'm really excited to see what you guys have in store for me and then share some of my ideas, what I can bring to the team too.
And then also Monica has been before the board before, but this is Monica Dool, she's our family health supervisor. So the three of them will be helping Amy present today for you, the Community Health Board. The first thing on our agenda is the CDC infrastructure funding. Beltrami County was awarded almost $200,000 through a federal CDC infrastructure grant. The purpose of the funding is to recruit, retain, and train a skilled and diverse public health workforce and also to address some longstanding public health infrastructure needs. I'm excited about this funding. One of Beltrami County's legislative priorities for 2023 was to seek investments in our local public health agencies. So this grant is a step towards that from the federal level. So we're happy to have the funding coming into the agency. At the January Community Health Board meeting, the previous public health director went over the Local Public Health Act. That Local Public Health Act governs the areas of public health responsibility. It lists the primary tenants that public health is tasked with providing in the community. And so public health, health agencies are able to meet those tenants at various levels across the state. Sometimes because of resource availability, we are not able to do some of the tenants that are listed in that Local Public Health Act. And so this funding coming in is a way that we can make sure that availability of qualified staff is not a reason that we're not able to meet the needs in our community. So this fund, this $200,000 can be used over the next five years. We don't have to break it down into equal increments over the next five years. We could use it all in the first year, but we do have to expend the funds by November of 2027. Like all of our public health grants, we are going to be keeping 10% for administrative costs for Health and Human Services. And you did receive in your packet the five main focus areas for the funding. Those five main focus areas are to support and sustain the public health workforce, to retain our public health staff, to train new and existing public health staff, to strengthen our workforce planning systems, processes, and policies, and to recruit and hire new public health staff. And there is a number of suggested activities that could be funded through the grant under each of those five focus areas. Those are just suggestions from MDH, that's not anything that our local public health agency has planned to do. And we want to be very intentional with this fund. We want to make sure that there's equity for staff moving forward. And then we also want to understand that we have to have boundaries as far as the broader countywide policies. So there's a number of things listed under those five focus areas that really aren't things that we're going to be looking into such as telework. We know that that's not something that's supported by our county board or our community health board. So that would not be something that we'd be bringing back to the board. Our goal at this point is to take some time now that we have Amy on board, look at what we can do with these funds, see where our gap areas are in those tenants that we're supposed to be meeting through that Local Public Health Act and then bring back a plan to this board at our next quarterly meeting. But I think it's also important for us to understand what you're thinking as far as the uses of these funds. So if there's any feedback you'd like to provide us, I think we'd really enjoy hearing that.
Any, any feedback?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Anne, I was just curious about a couple of things. The, that grant that we got, that, is that something we had to apply for? It's just that was?
We have to sign a grant contract to accept the funds, but it's not something that we applied for. It's something that was allocated to all public health agencies across the state.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
John. I'm not sure, uh, about the comment regarding the county board or public health board not being supportive of telework. I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I mean, it's 2023 and employees are looking for flexibility in, in, uh, in the workplace and if we're going to be competitive in this global economic current situation, when I think we should, uh, offer telework options for our employees when it makes sense, such as mental health counseling over Zoom or, or similar examples to that. So just so you're aware, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. That, uh, so I would like the county board to be open to discussing that further. Maybe we don't have a policy in place on that and, and we could get one established.
So Commissioner Gold, the only thing I mean by that is that we do not have a policy in place for that. So this funding would not make a policy around that. We would work within our current broad Beltrami County policies when we come up with a plan and a way to use these funds.
Would, uh, mental health counseling for children be a possible use of this funding?
That is not something that is listed as a way to use the funding. It really is to bolster our public health staff. So in the ways listed to really support, sustain the staff. The COVID challenges that we've seen over the last three years have really taken a toll on everyone, but also particularly on public health staff that have had to manage many pieces of the COVID pandemic.
This is more professional development and training for staff versus providing services?
Correct.
Okay, okay, very good. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Anne, is it possible that part of the plan might be to increase staff by adding a staff member or two or?
I think that that's something that we've discussed, but I'm not sure that we're ready to make any recommendation for adding staff. There's been a lot of discussion in the public health world about community health workers and how community health workers may assist public health across the state in meeting some of the demands on public health. There is a way to bill for community health workers. So it's really something that we'd have to look into as far as is that some, a way to meet the gaps that we have in our agency? And if so, what is the funding source for a position like that? So I don't think we're ready to make any recommendation around addition of staff.
Thank you.
I look, when I read through that, Anne, I, it looked to me like it's a starting, you're, you're just at the starting point. You're going to sit down and evaluate what is really needed that will help our community with public health. And, and with Anne aboard, I'm looking forward to, as a board member, to hearing what you recommend and together deciding what we want to do.
And I think that's our intention is really to hear what your thoughts are at this very beginning stage. Take those back, consider those, and then come back with a plan at our next quarterly meeting.
And personally, I don't, you know, I, I operate better by listening to what you folks feel would support and, and make our public health more viable for our constituents than I would throwing out some ideas that I might be handled in, in some other facet with public health or with health. So.
Yeah, I agree. I, I agree with what you just said.
Yeah, because you know, we're not in, we're not boots in the ground. We, we don't know what are required, is required right now. In fact, you know, we're, we're bits and pieces as, as you come to the board and explain what we've been doing with public health. But I know when we had home health care, that was something that was a tough thing to get rid of or move out to the community to do, but I think so far that's worked pretty well.
We kind of don't know what we don't know.
That's right.
Well, we are happy to come back with a plan proposal for these funds and then work collaboratively to move that forward.
Yeah, I'm afraid that if we waited for us to come up with a suggestion, you're not going to get one. So please come forward with your suggestions.
Well, we always want to be open to hearing what the board has to say too. So we wanted to make sure that you knew that we received this funding and that we'll be putting this plan together.
We appreciate that. I think that, you know, one of the obvious things for me would be not wanting to necessarily hire brand new people on a grant that we aren't necessarily going to keep continuing down the road. And, you know, funding, funding another staff position with not, not necessarily, you know, perpetual money. So that would, but if we can enhance training and, and get the, you know, get our staff more efficient with whatever that would be done, that would bring some ideas to us, that'd be great.
All right, sounds wonderful. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the opioid, opioid settlement fund update. We know that this board wants to be kept updated around decision making on these funds. And so we're going to keep this as an ongoing placeholder in our community health board agendas. We haven't had a lot changed since Monica was here to update the board a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. But we do have another settlement committee meeting on April twentieth. So right now that committee consists of Health and Human Services members, our county administrator. We have Sheriff Briggs on that committee. And then we've also invited two individuals from our city police department. And the agenda for that meeting is to finalize our committee partners. And we heard from this board that you want to see school nurses and commissioners be part of that committee. So we take those consideration and we'll discuss that at our next meeting and who else needs to be on that particular decision making committee. We're also going to look at what is the challenge areas that we want to address with opioid mitigation strategies? What goals and objectives do we need to have in order to address those challenge areas? And then of course, how to measure meaningful outcomes with these incoming funds? That's really a big piece of what we want to consider is what are we trying to achieve? And how do we measure that so that we can report back? So we're being very cognizant of that as we move forward. So like I said, we'll keep this on the agenda. We'll provide updates at least quarterly and more often if we have other things that we need to update the board on. But are there any questions regarding the opioid settlement funds at this point?
Mr. Chair.
So.
You said there was a couple of people from the Bemidji Police invited to join the group. What, what do you foresee as possible funding there? Training for the officers as far as mental health calls or?
So at this point, we're putting the committee together to help with a, with the decision making process on how to utilize the funds. So we're hoping to have the city police perspective on the decision making about how to use the funds. So nothing may be specific to training for them, but what do they see as the biggest hurdles that we need to jump? What are the mitigation strategies that, that we could utilize? We're just using them as a resource on this committee.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Jim.
So I'm just kind of curious about the city police and, and and would they really be able to provide any meaningful input without having to go to their, uh, their, their chief of police or, or, you know, the city council and, and have any type of discussions on, on how or what they can do and things like that? I'm kind of, kind of curious.
So the two police officers that we're hoping to have attend are Captain Lozella and then Joe Klesak, correct? Joe is heading up the drunk task force. So he came and talked with the board a couple of months ago with the update around opioid use. So they really have a wealth of knowledge in working specifically with the legal aspects of the population that we're hoping to serve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next thing on our agenda is the AmeriCorps position. We're excited that public health was awarded an AmeriCorps member for the 2324 program year. So AmeriCorps members are, they're not employees, they're not volunteers. AmeriCorps considers them members who are assigned to a service site. So it's very similar to an internship, other than the fact that they do receive a living allowance and then an educational award for serving as a public health AmeriCorps member. So the recruitment and interviewing is done by the AmeriCorps leadership team and they have invited both Amy and Monica to sit in on those interviews so that we do have a voice in who would be our AmeriCorps member. And then that member would be assigned to our family health team and they would start in August. So we're just in the interviewing process right now. We don't know who that individual will be at this point. But we do know that we would like them to help with some of the projects that we've already discussed. We're looking at helping with planning and implementation for our opioid settlement funds. So kind of setting up community meetings, putting together data, things like that. Also with our community needs assessment, which we are required as a public health agency to do every three years. And then some outreach work, especially around STI education, which is really important in our community with our STI rates. So this is an additional support for our family health team that is no cost to the county. So it seems like a win-win situation for us and we're excited to have them start. So any questions about our AmeriCorps person?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Jim.
So, um, as, as an alumni of AmeriCorps, you know, I, I come to appreciate, you know, the services that, that AmeriCorps offers and I know and understand the kind of folks that, that these, these folks, you know, have a determination and want to get things done in the community. So I'm kind of wondering, you know, once their service is done here at the county, is there any possibility? Or is there some way that, you know, maybe they can, maybe they'll spark an interest in, in, you know, county government? And, um, is there a possibility they can transition to an entry level position? Or some, some, support them through, you know, the schooling or whatever?
We would be very supportive of that, Commissioner Sumner. We actually have passed, two past interns that interned at Health and Human Services that went through the process to apply for positions and were successful in, in getting those positions with Health and Human Services. So I think as we mentor this individual, if they have an interest in continuing to work for the county, we would definitely be supportive of that.
I think they can sign up to four years. I believe like through the AmeriCorps program, they can sign up to four years, if I'm correct, to continue on in that position. So potentially if it's a great fit, they could even continue as an AmeriCorps worker up to four years plus.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the funding though is only on a annual basis, so it would be contingent upon future funding, is that correct?
Um, yes, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So the AmeriCorps, they have put a bunch of money into just public health core specific positions. I don't know at that level how long or what the duration of that will be. What my understanding was from what they shared with us is that they have multiple, this started last year and they're already, they're continuing in other counties and other agencies with multiple years. So it would be until the AmeriCorps funding, as long as it's there, we can continue.
Okay. All right.
All right. So next up, I'm going to have Monica speak to a few things.
Okay, so I get to share some fun things that we have been doing. So first off, we have our WIC program and we just received a $5,000 equity in lactation grant. We've received this over the last few years, we've applied for it. Just to kind of, the purpose of it is just to improve equity in lactation in the community. So this year, what we have decided to do is develop a breastfeeding support group within our community. Currently, right now, breastfeeding resources are very, very limited in our community. So our plan with this is to be able to provide more support. To eliminate barriers, we've identified four different geographical locations in the community that we will be doing at Northwest Tech. They have offered some space for us to do it so that we are in the Nine More area, Rail River Folk School, Paul Bunyan Center. And then also we are partnering with the Northwest Breastfeeding Coalition and then the Northwest Indian Community Development Center. And so they are actually, one day a month, they're going to be holding the group at their agency. So the, the funding timeframe for this is May first and then it'll be through September thirtieth. But we actually have been able to, a few of the places we've had to secure rent. And so with this funding and we're actually going to contract out a year. So our hope is to continue to provide this with all of our partnerships in the community and have it be an ongoing thing. So once a week in a different location, these support groups will be available to those in the community at free of charge. So that is one thing. Second thing is, is we have a WIC participants receive $30 in vouchers for the farmer's market for each season. And historically, our numbers have been really low, the redemption rates have been very low. Last year, we kind of changed it up and almost made like a target pickup. We are partnering with some of the local farmers and they're pre-bundling packages for us. And so we have a staff go to the farmer's market on Tuesdays and Thursdays and our participants are able to opt in or opt out via text. And we actually, they'll drive up and we'll provide the fresh fruit, vegetables, and recipes and education on anything that they need. So that's been really successful. Just from last year, we've increased the rate six percent. So we're hoping now with the second year, just with more information and knowledge about it, that we can even increase that more. Um, let's see. The next piece that we have is, I know some of you have heard of our HERSA grant that we have. It's a federal grant, Health Resources and Service Administration that we have with, it's actually a Sanford Health grant. They are, we're a network partner with Leech Lake, Red Lake IHS, and Scenic Rivers and Big Fork. We are providing the home visiting component to that grant. It's a universal grant, so anybody is eligible that resides or gives birth or has any connection with anybody, any of those partners within this community. The purpose of the grant or how it came about or why Sanford applied for it is that 12% of babies that were born in this community, moms had not had any prenatal healthcare, which is significant and significant risk to maternal child health outcome. So we have been lucky enough to be a part of that. With this grant, the first year was planning, we're now in our second year with this grant. And I just wanted to share the greatest outcome that we've seen so far is the collaboration and the referrals between Sanford. It's been significant. We've probably tripled our referrals just from coordinating weekly with Sanford, like the high-risk OB coordinator. So just the real positive piece to that. The program goes for zero to, well, prenatally through six weeks. And at six weeks, we can either roll them into some of our other home visiting programs or else they And at six weeks, we can either roll them into some of our other home visiting programs or else they they graduate out of the program. Um. I'm not sure if, and then the other pieces is our Strong Foundations Grant. That's another one that we need to provide uh quarterly reports on. So just to let you know where we're at with that, currently, we have sixteen families in that program. Um, we have two RNs that are serving that, one social worker, and then we have one vacant position in RN that we're in, in the midst of hiring right now. Um, the goal for that is twenty-five families. So we're hoping with bringing on another person, that that'll help us kind of get those numbers up. Um, one of the challenges, it it's kind of funny, it's a two sides to it. So we have a Healthy Families of America Evidence-Based Model, that's what we use. It has some pretty strict guidelines that makes it the evidence-based. But it's, so from prenatally to year one, it requires weekly visits. Sometimes that is a challenge with retaining families and keeping that consistency. It doesn't really meet families where they're at. At two to, or one to two, it goes to bimonthly meetings. And then from two to three, it goes to monthly or quarterly meetings. We have families that, like I said, it's not meeting where they're at. So some of them do not want to be seeing us that frequently. Some of us wish that they could see us more. So, but that's a challenge without that universal. Also, it's pretty limited on who, you know, meeting criteria for that program. But so that is all I have for today.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, folks. It was good to hear what you had to say and uh it's nice that we're as active as we've become. Help me board in. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And I think we have the HHS Managed Care Unit restructure. Think I know who is going to be involved with that. Yeah, you want to introduce yourself? No, I'm just joking.
I mean, I.
Just joking, no.
Who's that handsome guy right there?
Yeah.
Jeff Lynn, Social Service Director, is going to help me present um on our HHS Organizational Structure Update. Um, I chose this title intentionally as opposed to Health and Human Services Organizational Change. Um, I really wanted to identify the importance of the fact that our structure needs to respond to the changes that affect the agency's responsibilities. Um, so we need to be flexible. Um, as you well know, the work that Health and Human Services does is directed by statute and policy. And often that policy is provided to us by either MDH or DHS. Um, and our technology systems are also assigned to us by those lead agencies. So that ends up directing our workflow at times. Um, we often see changes in that statute and policy. Um, and so we need to be nimble with our ability to respond to those changes. And in that, we often reevaluate our agency for the most effective and efficient processes and structure. And I think that's important for us to continue to do ongoing. So I don't think it's necessarily an organizational change, it's an organizational update. And I think you will see me occasionally coming forward with some of these updates to say. Here's a way that our agency is going to be flexible to best meet the demands of the work that we've been tasked to do. Um, so about a year ago, Health and Human Services Leadership began a discussion about our managed care team. Um, you may have heard of this team in the past referred to as our Prime West Team. Um, or our Home Care Team. So there's been a lot of evolution with this team over time as those statutes and policies have changed. Um, but that conversation started with my predecessor and also with the Public He- Health Director, um Megan, when she was in that role. And um when I took over as direct director, we decided to continue those discussions. Okay, what is the best place for managed care to live within our organizational structure? Um, and ultimately, as we talked with staff, as we talked with our leadership. Um, the decision was made that really the best place for managed care is under our Social Services Division as opposed to our Public Health Division. Um, so we have the PowerPoint. We can flip. So the update or the change is to relocate the managed care unit under the Social Services Division. So our managed care unit consists of one supervisor, our Community Health Program Manager, and ten managed care case managers. And what this unit does is they provide case management coordination to our sixty-five-plus population primarily. So they're looking to serve that sixty-five-plus population that receives a managed care program. To help them to either remain in their home or live in the least restrict restrictive setting possible. Um, we also have one case manager who works with um individuals eighteen plus, eighteen years of age and over. Who have some complex, either mental health or physical health needs. And that program is called the Special Needs Basic Care Program. That's provided by managed care companies. And the care coordinator is within this managed care group, so it's not all sixty-five plus, and I wanted to be specific about that. Um, so we have that team and they've had some changes. Um, one big change happened eight years ago and um. We had the home care that ended and and Commissioner Anderson actually talked about that in our previous discussion. Um, that was a difficult decision for the county. And um we had a very direct link to providing in-home public health services in this team when we had home care through the county. Um, that ended in, I think it officially ended in twenty sixteen. Uh, we did began the discussion in twenty fifteen. But home care has since ended. It's been quite some time. Um, and in that time, we also now have a second uh managed care company that Beltrami County works with in Blue Cross Blue Shield. So instead of the prime west case managers, now we call them the managed care team. So we're always responding to these changes that are coming at us and and kind of morphing the work that we do because of it. So here's our current structure. There's a big red arrow um on the PowerPoint that identifies where that managed care team currently lives in our organizational structure. And we would like it to change. Basically, it's gonna move under the Social Services Division. So it's just kind of a visual to show you, it's here in in public health and we'd like it to land under Social Services, which is. Um, led by Jeff Lynn, who's going to speak here in a minute. And why? What are the big whys behind this? So one, I mentioned home care ending. Also, we have a new public health director, so the timing is right to do this. Um, we need, we, we don't want to uh teach her a program that she doesn't need to learn or understand. Um, and with the change in this managed care team and the similarities between what that team does and what Social Services Adult Services already does. Um, there's really no need for two division directors to have to understand that program. So we're looking at efficiencies and leadership as well. Um, the demands on public health are changing. Uh, the focus in our social determinants of health have changed over these years. Um, one example of that is the opioid settlement funds. Five years ago, I do not think anyone in public health would have envisioned themselves managing millions of incoming dollars to do opioid mitigation strategies. So we have to be flexible in public health too, and there are a lot of those changes coming at public health. And we want public health to focus on um those tenants that they're responsible to provide. Um, so this is a way to, again, be more efficient with our resources. And then, of course, the program evolution has aligned the managed care with social services much more so than public health over ye- over the years. And so with that programmatic change, I'm gonna have Jeff come and talk a little bit about the specifics of how the program has changed.
I'll also mention that Ann said relocating the the one program to another program, we're not looking at any physical relocation. They're going to be staying in the same places. We're just looking at where they are on the organizational structure. Um, so programs, under the program portion. The services provided in in adult services and waiver case management are fundamentally similar to the programs that are that are offered through managed care. It it's honestly, it's about setting up services and programs to help keep people in their own homes. I mean, if they can't be in their own homes, to be in the least restrictive environments, so that the work they do is really similar. Um, over the years, one of the challenges that that we've experienced is in social services, we get um training opportunities. That have not always been made available to individuals in public health department. We've tried to do a better job of that in the past few years, uh, but the truth is, some things are social services. Well, the services that we're providing are really similar. So what we're able to do if we, as we move forward, is make sure that those training opportunities are available to all of our staff. Many of those training opportunities have no cost. They're provided by the Department of Human Services. Their kind of webinar-type things, things like that. So it's really, it's really helpful for all of our staff to have access to that. Um, the, one of the biggest things that's changing here in the near future. Uh, many of you have been around long enough to have heard Min Choices. We've talked about Min Choices ad nauseam at at times. But Min Choices is is an assessment tool that is used to assess the needs of the individual as they move forward. As they enter into our programs and then as they continue in our programs, what services are necessary to meet their needs, right? So in the adult services side, on the social services side, it has been Min Choices. That is what we've had to switch to, um, and that is what we've been using. On the managed care side, it's the LTCC, the Long-Term Care Consultation System. Well, that's changing. They're all going to come under Min Choices as well. Uh, so having, having access to the, to the knowledge base, the social services already has, is going to be immensely beneficial to our managed care. Staff as we move that forward and roll it out. Uh, the other thing that that changed in the past few years is, I think it's the past few years anyhow. Uh, our SSIS, our Social Services Information System, managed care used to not be under that. They were under, what was the program they were under? PHD. So now they have moved under the Social Social Services Information System. So it's again, it's a, and that's the same system that we use in social services, right? So what it does is it again allows one person to have uh knowledge of of those programs and not have to maintain that secondary knowledge. Of of uh the, again. PHD, because I don't use that one. I don't even remember what it's called. So um. Again, we do pretty much the same work. Our, this, this will also allow, so there's a certain knowledge base that our. Our social services staff have, particularly as as it pertains to mental health. And then there's a a particular knowledge base that our our managed care staff has, particularly as it pertains to the elderly population. Well, in the past, there hasn't been that much communication back and forth. So this is going to allow collaboration between our staff to not only strengthen our, you know, our mental health. When, as it pertains to our elderly population, because we all know that as we get older, there are other mental health issues that sometimes arise, right? And then we also are going to be able to provide that mental health knowledge to our, our elderly population. And then be able to provide that that knowledge back the other way as well. So there's, there's a lot of different reasons, I think, to move this forward, and it just makes sense. Um, billing is pretty much going to be the same. Again, that's another thing that's changing. It used to be under capitation. It's going to be based on fee-for-service billing now, which is again what social services has already been doing kind of forever. Um, and so the knowledge base that we have in the social services should help transfer to our our managed care team. So I think I covered most of it. Try not to read off the, off that too much. So any, any questions on that?
I, I guess, I I don't know if it has to do with what you just finished saying, but uh I had written down. The tasks that occur under managed care. How are they different from the tasks that occurred under the home healthcare?
The, the, the home healthcare, that was people going actually into the home and providing direct service.
Right, and.
And so, and and managed care is is case management. It's, it's setting up the services. Oftentimes, they were linked in the past. Because we had our own, we had two separate programs that were, that were linked anyway, because they're both county programs. It made it really easy to to make those referrals and get the services in place. Now that has become, it's become more of a challenge. There throughout all of our, our service programs, we are, it is more and more difficult. To find people to provide the services that are necessary, whether it's mental health at every level, whether it's physical health at every level. Those challenges are probably not going to change. Um, and and we're really, we're still continuing to see po- our populations aging. And we're seeing more need for services going forward, and there seems like there's less people to provide this.
I guess that's the question I have, because there is some of constituents that I have that have talked to me about the difficulty of getting service. And and I know that when we, we stopped home healthcare. There were agencies in our community that took that over and we followed them through for a year to make sure that we were covering the bases. And I'm just wondering if we're still covering the bases or if it's starting to drop now because there's not people to fill those positions.
I, I think we're seeing more, we're seeing a larger drain on our system. We have more people in need of services. And we're seeing few people that are able and or willing to provide those services. Um, the, the reimbursement streams from the state and Fed have not kept up with some of the other private sector programming. So there's a lot of different factors that are, that are really factoring into it.
But it is still true that if we can keep folks in their homes, that's a lot cheaper. Not only nicer for them perhaps, but a lot cheaper for the county to make sure that that happens. Who knows? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more slide. So we have done a lot of prep work. We've talked about this internally for about a year. Um, and so moving this forward, we don't really have to do a lot of additional preparation other than this discussion with you, the county board. Um, we've gotten the feedback from staff, from leadership. We've researched the budgetary impact resulting in none. Um, and really, all we need to do moving forward is update HR and payroll with a date of change and then let the staff know we're able to move forward with this. Um, the proposed date that we'd like to make this official is May first. Um, and like I said, there would be no change in service provision. There would be no budgetary impact. Um, all of the things that we've listed are, uh, when we did the pros and cons, those are the pros. We had very few cons. Um, and so we would like to move this forward and have this unit be officially under Social Services as of May first. Um, so that's kind of where I'd like to hear any concerns or feedback um from you.
Okay, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so part of the summary statement, uh, there's a, a sentence here that says, after much, much research, feedback, and discussion with both leadership and staff. HHS would like to move forward with the managed care unit, move it to the Public Health Division. I'm just kind of curious, how much research? Uh, where is this research? Uh, what kind of? Feedback and discussions did you have and with who? Um, is it, uh, because, you know, I I try to, you know, think about the frontline workers that, you know, been through a lot, you know, the past couple of years. And and maybe what kind of um feedback that they had or or how this is going to impact the, the duties that they. That they're currently working with and and things like that, so um.
Ah, Commissioner Sumner, um, we started with our frontline staff with this conversation. Um, and that group, the managed care group, very much supports the change. They see the ways that their work has aligned with social services. And so we've had a number of discussions with them, uh, starting with Becky and Megan, the Public Health Director and the previous director. And then I also met with the frontline staff, Jeff and I did, um, to have continued conversation with them about a way forward. And how, what their comfort level is with it. Um, so I'm really proud of that collaboration that we did with that group to understand what their needs are. Um, and this was very focused on serving the needs of that group and the population that they serve. We did um some research around pros and cons. We did some written documents on, okay, here's maybe, what are some unintended consequences? What are the benefits of this? What is the financial implic- implication? Um, so we did a lot of that research internally with our leadership team and a lot of discussion. And then we also shared that with our larger leadership group and with our staff as well. Um, so we really um worked hard so that this is not a surprise. This is something that's supported across the board. Um, and the reasons, any concerns that that group had, we invited them to talk with both Jeff and I when we met with their group a month ago. Um, so I think we're being very intentional to try to move it forward in a way that's supportive to all.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, just wondering, so is it, was it roughly ten staff or how many staff? Was it ten?
A supervisor.
And and then would they report to Jeff then or?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just kind of the, getting a picture in my head of where these people sort of move up out of public health and move up to working under, under Jeff's division. Great. Sounds like a good plan to me. Thank you.
Okay, uh, and Tom, do we have any uh? Uh, we don't have any language right now to move this forward for May first, or do we?
Uh, no, sir. You don't need to make a motion or take any action on this. Uh, staff are here simply to give you information and to seek more or less your blessing, but there's no formal action that needs to be taken on it since there's no addition to FTE count. Or any changes in the budget.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, now we have, uh, we switch from health to tax service. Taxpayers, I believe.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jody Treat, Auditor Treasurer. I come with a reorganization as well. Um, the Auditor Treasurer's Office isn't quite as extensive as Health and Human Services, so I think I can probably get through this, um, pretty quickly. Um, prior to two thousand and sixteen, the Auditor Treasurer's Office was made up of. Real Estate and Tax Division, the License Center Division and Finance. Um, leading up to that time, that's, that's the period that the county was experiencing. The out of home placement issues that then led to the fiscal cliff. And that was talked about a lot amongst management team and, um, department heads were very conscious and intentional. Um, about trying to find ways to streamline our processes and downsize if, if it was, if we were able to. Um, at that time, um, we had two retirements, so the Real Estate and Tax Division. And the License Center Division were combined into one, um, into the realit- or. Taxpayer Services Division that had just one director. Um, Diane, do you have the, can you pull up the? So this is, no, you can go, just go back. This is what, um, the structure looks like after we made that combination. So you'll see under Taxpayer Services Division, there was one director and three very unique areas. Um, we had a, a real estate and tax division or area. We had the License Center area and then elections. So our Real Estate and Tax Division Director was in charge of those three unique areas. This is something that we tried for a few years. And, and have now come to the conclusion that it's not in the best interest of the citizens or of our employees to continue on. Um, it's a, it's an idea that looked great on paper and when you put it into practice. Those three unique areas just provide, um, it has too much, um, too many. Unique responsibilities that there's just not enough hours in the day for our one director to provide what's required in each of those areas. So what I, what I'm, would like to consider is now, if you can go to the next one. Is separating that Real Estate and Tax Division back into its two separate divisions. So that would leave the Auditor Treasurer's Office with a Finance Division with its own director. The realist, or the, uh, License Center Division with its own director and Real Estate and Tax Division with the director. And I'll kind of walk through what each of those would look like now. So starting on the right. Our Real Estate and Tax Division, what we would do is move our tax specialist. Give our tax specialist the supervisory role in that area that then has them become. The Real Estate and Tax Division Director. This is a title and a job description that we had prior to two thousand and sixteen. So we would be reactivating that title and job description. Um, moving to the center with the License Center Division. We would be taking our real estate or our taxpayer services director and. Reverting, reactivating that position into the License Center Division Director. So that position would focus solely on the License Center, all of the, um, requirements and. Statutes that, that surround the License Center. And then finally, the change to our Finance Division would be having elections completely under finance, um. Taken care of upstairs. The change or the culture in elections has changed a lot over the last few years. And that's something that we really want to have, uh, more attention to and more of a focus on. And coming up in the, uh, the regular section, session, Linda is going to bring, um, a, a job description to you. That we can go over a little at that time to, in creating a dedicated election specialist to work on elections all, all of the time. In the, uh, agenda bill, I had that there was not a budget. This is a budget neutral action. Um, the reason it, it is budget neutral is because of moving that. Um, license and election specialist into one hundred percent election, um, duties. So what I can do is each year I budget in my elections budget for. Um, election judges to come in and work temporarily with us to help with some of those duties. By creating a one hundred percent elections position. I can then not have to use as much of that budget on the election judges and I can refocus that on, on the election specialist. I guess with that, if you have any questions on the, um. What we're proposing, the, what I need from the board is, is a y or a n. You know, this is, this would require a board action to move forward with this. There is no change in FTE. There is no. Um, change in budget. There is no additional budget money. Um, there would be some, um, union. Union changes. One of the positions would be changing. From a non, from a union position to a non-union position. Prior to two thousand and sixteen, this was a non-union position. In sixteen, we took away the supervision, made it a union position. Now we'd like to revert back to the way it was prior to two thousand and sixteen.
Any comments or questions or?
Mr. Chair.
Jim?
So with this election specialist, is that a levy position or, or is the state gonna? Provide additional funding to help with the elections since, you know, this is an ongoing thing. Um, you know, I think it was maybe last year when you gave an, uh, update where you talked about elections is kind of year round now. It's no, it's no longer the, the every two year cycle type of thing now, so. Is, is the state giving more money for, for elections and, and?
So what, what my proposal is, Diane, could you go back to the, the, um, this. Down on the right-hand side, there's a fifty percent election special, election licensed specialist in elections and fifty percent in license center. So the, the job description is taking the license center duties. Out of that job description and having it one hundred percent licensed, or I'm sorry, one hundred percent election position. So at that point, there is no change in, um, pay scale. It's still on the pay scale where it was and it was budgeted for. So yes, elections are a budgeted, um, position.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, uh, you mentioned that, uh, we, the current system or chart that we have is, is. Was, uh, passed in twenty sixteen. It's hard to believe that it's been that, that long already. Um, but I, but I imagine that, you know, over those, you know, years, you know, you probably. Been a, a change in a lot of things, um, you know, with, uh. Rets and, and finance and, and licensing. I'm just kind of curious, um, this would in effect. The, the licensing department in any way, are, are you still doing the? Uh, lunch, lunch hour for the license department or is that, is that gonna be affected anyway? No?
We, it was, I believe, last summer that we implemented the closing over. Uh, lunch break to allow for the employees to, to be able to take their lunch break until we were up to full staff. That went a, a few months, five or six months maybe at the beginning of twenty-three then. We were able to complete our staff, so we are full staffed. And all of those line clerks now can rotate their lunches in and out, so we are open over the lunch break. This would not change that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, Jody, the, um. The position that you would fill then as the. The third division director. Thank you. Uh, the License Center Division Director, that's something that you would, uh, elevate a person from within that's ready to take on that role, is that?
It would be the person that is currently doing the Taxpayer Services Division Director. Would become the License Center Division Director.
Then who becomes the real estate director?
That position would be elevated from taxpayer specialist. From tax specialist, the person that, um, does our tax calculation, rate calculation. So that person then would be, we would be reactivating that job description that we had prior to two thousand and sixteen. That contained all of the duties that our tax specialist does, plus the supervision duties that makes them the division director.
Um, I, I think this makes sense, so I'm not, so my questions aren't geared towards, I don't think it makes sense. I do think it makes sense. But I'm still, I, I don't know where I'm missing this, but if now we've elevated a person from a tech position to an administrative position. It sounds like that's going to cost us more money.
And that's by, that's what I mentioned, um, by now creating the one position as a one hundred percent of elections. I can have her focus on election duties, so I don't have to hire as many election judges to come in and complete those duties. So that's where the salary savings is.
Well, it seems like a lot of work. All of a sudden, you're going to have an election coming up and, and whether it's, um. Uh. You know, Au- August, September primaries or the, it, how do you, how do you not have the people? I mean, you, you would. Still, you still need to have all those people, right?
We would still have some of the people. The, the changes, if you, if you just look at the changes. The changes would cost about seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, additional money to raise, to elevate the one position. Um, I have in elections around twenty-five thousand for election judges to come in and work. So I don't need to use all of the election judges, um, just that portion that we won't need any longer because of. Having the one hundred percent elections position.
And, and you have someone in the real estate that's capable of taking on a director?
Very capable, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Joe?
So I guess I'm still a little hung up on if there isn't a budget impact. How come? Uh, you need our approval with this and with the last one, we didn't. If one of you could speak to that a little more.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. It's an excellent question because typically we wouldn't ask for a formal approval. Uh, in this particular case, we are having an adjustment that impacts the union contract. And of course, since you all signed those union contracts and we agree to what is in the union contracts. And this is a position that will be a union position that will be coming out of the union and going into the non-union. We wanted to make sure that the union knew that the board had approved this particular reorganization before we then. Worked with the union to get their blessing on it as well. So, um, essentially your approval is the signature to the, even though it's not physical, it's a. The sign to the board that, or to the, uh, union that you are in agreement with, uh, with the movements.
Has the union, uh, stated a position on this yet?
We did receive correspondence from the union that was asking questions about the position. And they were also asking questions about the movement and how it sort of worked. We addressed the questions this morning. Uh, they were concerned that they hadn't been consulted. We said that we wanted to consult with the board first before we consulted with the union. And they said, thank you, they're going to be awaiting, you know, what the decision of the board is.
Okay, my hangup then is I, I would like to know what their position is first before I decide. You know, we need to. Know the position of all key stakeholders involved before we make an ultimate decision here, in my opinion.
We are intending to meet with the union, uh, as soon as we got your general direction. I think maybe if you could give staff. Um, your direction pursuant to an assumption that the union would be okay. And if the union is not okay and you want to give a different direction, I suppose that's okay too. But we would like to be able to communicate something to the union as it relates to the board's position on this. If you are favorably inclined. To do it, then we work out the details with the union. That's a different conversation for us to have with the union representation than if the board is not. Because if that's the case, then there's no point to having a conversation with the union.
I want to be support. I think this is a, generally speaking, this is a good organizational, uh. Change that's, that makes sense, uh, on paper. Um, but I, I would like to see a, a, a union position, uh. Stay with this, um, you know, my feeling is, uh. Folks are a little bit better off, uh, in a union versus not, so, um, that's where I'm at.
Okay, uh, and I'm, I guess my statement I was going to make is, from my perspective is. I'm glad we are an organization that can try something and if it doesn't work, that we're okay with going back. Kind of the way it was, because sometimes we get pretty hung up on the fact that we can't move back and forth. But if it's better for the organization, then I think we should do it. And this particular position that we're talking about was non-union before and then went union because of the change of description. So, uh. As far as I'm concerned and, and we can just take, uh, uh, head nod of who's supporting this and then if, uh. Then we can go from there, because otherwise you're not going to know.
Yeah, so that was my question, Mr. Chair, is obviously this is a work session that we don't take, um. Votes on. Is this something that we need to put on the regular agenda?
Well, there's two approaches that the, the board can take. Uh, the first one to satisfy maybe Commissioner Gold's concerns is we could just get. Your general unders- or your general approval. It's not going to be formal, but it's just going to be say, yes, we like this approach. Go and work with the union to, to make it happen or see if you can make it happen. And then that would all, would be all we would need for the work session. Um, that would probably be advised at this point, given the concern. And then when we talk with the union and worked out the details, we bring back probably a formal MOU. Uh, and then that would be approved formally by the board in a regular session. So that would be probably the preferred method to go. Um, I would be concerned that if you put this on your regular agenda for this afternoon. And took a formal position on, it would be a bit more binding than maybe Commissioner Gold is comfortable with. Um, so that's why I recommend maybe, given the conversation that I'm hearing, that you just give staff your general, um. As long as, uh, the majority of you agrees that that's the direction you want to go, that will be a good sign for the staff to then. Negotiating good faith with the union on that direction.
Greg? Mr. Chair, could we not just make it a contingency of the motion that upon approval of the union, that this would be, be binding? Is it, would that be feasible?
Yeah, we're not going.
No, no, I'm saying in the regular meeting, put it on the agenda and then make it as part of the motion saying that. You know, providing approval from the union that this would move forward. So we would be, we would already have made the decision as long as the union approves, it's a done deal.
Yes, so, so Jody, what's the, are we really in some kind of a time crunch or we really got to put this as a formal motion? I, I mean, what was your, what was your anticipation for when this might be effective? June first, May first, July first? Yesterday?
We, we are not under a time crunch to have this done. This is something that we've been working on for a while and it's. It's just the pieces are falling into place. So, um, I brought it to the work session now so that. We could move forward. Linda could move forward and work with the union, um. I don't know if you came up here.
If I could just add just a couple of things here. So anytime we do this, typically if we do go to the union first, they approve it. On the basis that the board would then approve it later. So there always is that contingency that Craig is talking about. And just for a clarification within the county, all county employees who are supervised. And just for a clarification within the county, all county employees who are supervisory are non-union. And the reason that this position would be coming out of the union is because it is a supervisory position. So under the recognition cla- um, clauses of the asking union, anybody who is non-super, it was supervisory, is not an eligible member. Of that union, so they would go revert back to being a non-union supervisory position, so just wanted to clarify that as to. Where that recognition clause comes into play and why this position would be coming out of the union at this time.
Okay, so then, Mr. Chair, I, it just seems to me that there's, there's no urgency that we have to put this on. Tonight's agenda with stipulations, I, I think generally we all sort of are supporting Jody's idea. Subject to maybe some other things, and I think maybe we get a head nod of move forward at whatever pace you think is appropriate.
Here, Tim has a.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I was gonna say, if, I, I don't see the, the urgency and. And, um, you're making a motion tonight to approve the, the proposal, so I mean, if, if you can get us another meeting, you know, um, and that way. Uh, if we had any further questions, or, or, you know, um. But it, it sounds like you have a person in mind that you're gonna elevate to this director, correct? Or, or is it, is it gonna be a, a position that needs to be interviewed, or, or?
No, that's correct, we have a, we have a person in mind, so when the retirement happened in two thousand and sixteen. The supervision was pulled off that job description, and this person then filled that position. So she has been working, doing all of the duties except for the supervision for the last six years. And so she is the person that would then take on the supervision along with the duties that she has been doing.
So she would be okay with, with going to, to non-union?
She is supportive of this change, yes. And in fact, I believe she's at the union meeting in case they have any questions of her, right now.
Well, Mr. Chair, I mean, I, I'm, I'm supportive, but, you know, may- maybe, um, you know, with, with, you know, respect to my, to my colleagues here. Maybe give it two weeks and, and, uh. I, 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 I don't see the.
The only thing, I just hate kicking a can down the road for no reason, and, and, um, Linda, I believe. In a couple of weeks, you won't be here to negotiate or with the union. Is that correct?
I will be sticking around until.
Oh, you will, okay.
Filled, so I will be here for a little longer, as long as, um, you guys agree to that, I offered to do that, um, but yes, we'll get a. I've been in contact with Chris Capella, and he knows that we, we would meet on this as soon as we had a direction from the board, so. Um, they're aware of it, and, um, we'll be meeting with them.
Sounds good.
I think, well, I, I personally, I think we're better off following through with. Uh, what Tom had mentioned, that you'll talk to the union and come back to the board with their, uh. How things went with that discussion.
Yeah, generally interested in pursuing it still, just.
Yep.
More information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, let's move on with, uh, assessment information.
Good afternoon. Uh, Jill Garrett, County Assessor. Um, so I'm in front of you today, just to give you a little update, um, what typically. Uh, happens this time of the year is we're out doing our border reviews with the townships. And so we're telling people, you know, what's been happening in the county, um, with sales, um. With value changes, things of that nature, we're talking to the town boards, um, giving them information. And so I just wanna make sure you have that same information that we're giving out to everybody else. And so there was a, uh, spreadsheet that was included, um, I think you can see that. With that, there's a. Whole list of all the different townships and how much each one of them went up, um. Obviously, this year, we're looking at increases that were all less than fifteen percent in any of the districts. Um, last year, um, we probably had. You know, ma- many of the districts, if not almost all of them, that were over fifteen percent and, and as high as twenty-five and thirty percent. So the market has, has drawn back and it has calmed down, um, but we still are seeing, um. You know, a lot of townships in that eight, ten, twelve percent increase range. Um, and the, in the county overall, uh, went up nine point six percent. Um, eight point five percent just from, uh, value change, uh, the other percentage was from new construction, so. Um, that puts our, uh, county value now at, um, almost five and a half, uh, billion dollars in taxable. Uh, property, so, um, going up quite drastically the last couple of years. So there's not really a lot of, uh. More information that I wanted to give you, unless there's some questions on that.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just think Joe's picking on my township. The top three are in my, uh, district, uh.
They are, yes, that's just an area that, uh.
Pretty pissed at ours last year.
Seems to be growing a little bit more, I mean, we, we just look at township by township, the sales that are there, and. Um, those particular areas seem to be, uh, in need of a little more increase than some of the others, so. The sales are indicating that, and so we made those adjustments, um. You know, the highest increase was up in Washtish on Red Lake, that's been one of our slowest markets in a long time. Um, and now all of a sudden, it just kind of exploded this last year, we're, we're right at about fifteen percent on that one, so that was, uh. Kind of an area that had not been increasing that rapidly, so it's kind of surprising, um. Again, just looking at some other data, uh, the last three years, we had, uh, forty-six million, almost forty-seven million in new. Construction, um, you don't have these numbers in front of you, actually, um, I can give you a sheet, however, so that. You can have these numbers, because they're kind of interesting, but, um. That was in twenty-twenty-one, in twenty-twenty-two, it went up to fifty million, eight seventy-nine. And this year, we're at fifty-four million, almost fifty-five million new construction, so even with, uh, the price of. Uh, lumber and materials and the cost of new construction, our building is up and things are still moving forward. And, and also, um, people are still building new homes, things are still. The market's still strong, it's still going well, um, you know, that interest rates are up, but house sales are still. Really strong, um, last year, we had one thousand, one hundred and twelve sales in the county. This year, we had one thousand ninety-three, so, uh, you know. Only about twenty-five sales or less, twenty sales difference from one year to the next, um, which is pretty close, so the market's staying strong. Um, and, and you know, obviously, we've seen a lot less increase than last year, but. Uh, nine point six percent county-wide increase is still the second largest in the last ten years. So the market's been strong, now those are from sales from, um, October of twenty-twenty-one. Through September of twenty-twenty-two, so sales from October of twenty-two to now will be in the next study. And so, you know, that will tell us, I guess, if things are gonna continue like they have been or not. Um, right now, I haven't looked at enough of those to really. Uh, say things are changing, I have noticed that we are over on our assessed value. On a couple of sales that have been coming in, I can't tell you if that's gonna be a trend. But if that does hold, that would mean we actually need to reduce values, um, into the next year, but. Again, we have, uh, the whole summer of sales to include yet in that study, and so we can only take it year to year. Um, but we've just come off of the two biggest increases in market value that I've ever seen, so. Here we are, and we've been getting a lot of phone calls, we're in the appeals process, uh, we've been out at border reviews the last two days, and we got. Um, you know, two and a half weeks left to go, uh, to get through them all, but the calls have been down, and the property owners. I've been good to work with, they're not too many people yelling at me too hard, um, and so. It's been actually going really well, um, but, so that's kind of just my update, I wanted to let you know, kind of where we're at, what we're doing. The type of changes we're seeing, the type, you know, the number of sales, new construction. Things are still strong out there, the market's strong, and we're moving forward, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Let me hand out one of these sheets to everybody.
Okay. Don't complain about that. Yeah. Be sure to turn your mic.
Thanks, Joe.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the county board. Um, as you know, we've been working for some time to develop a joint meeting with the city of Bemidji and the county board, uh, that'd be the council and the county board. Um, we have, I've had several meetings now with the mayor and also the interim or acting city manager. Uh, I asked that our staff at the county as well as, uh, the city. And also for you to provide any ideas in regards to topics that we want to discuss while we had. An opportunity to, uh, have this joint meeting, uh. Staff have met with, uh, city staff, or county staff have met with city staff, and identified a list of topics that we preliminarily. Uh, worked out, I provided that in your packet for your consideration. Uh, and I wanted to run through that with you this evening to make sure that we were on the, the right page before we formalized this agenda and then published it. Uh, for the meeting, which is contemplated, uh, for Monday, May the eighth at five thirty P M. The meeting is, um, roughly around two hours, it's not really set for a certain length of time. But it seems like that's kind of typically what we've done in the past, and that that's what the county, or the city is open to as well. I've hit drifts a little longer than that, you know, that's up to you and the city council in regards to holding the meeting as long as you feel like you need to. Um, there have been five formal suggested items, uh, with some subtopics that have been included. Uh, the jail project update is of high interest to the city council. Uh, I'm told that that will probably dominate the majority of the conversation, there's a lot of questions. That the city council members, uh, and the mayor, uh, share, uh, in regards to, uh. Kind of gathering information on where the project is, what's happening, those sorts of things. Um, the airport has also been another area of discussion that seems to be of interest to the city. Uh, and the county on two levels, one, uh, the airport's operating, essentially it appears without bylaws, and so the joint district. Would, would be, uh, would be prudent to develop bylaws by which the organization. Uh, runs itself, since that is jointly owned and operated by the city and the county. So there will be probably an introductory discussion about that and sort of a process, uh, potentially laid out. Uh, also, there are some deeds for the properties that, that are of, uh, that make up the airport and the surrounding area. That need to have some transfers associated with them, as I understand, uh, because it's in joint ownership of the city and the county. There are some deeds that lack one entity or the others, um, inclusion of those deeds, so that will be discussed. Uh, the county's law enforcement center is another topic that's being recommended. Uh, one, uh, in relationship to the, a similar deed issue in that, uh, the city believes it's not on the deed for. Law enforcement center, and of course, when that law enforcement center contract, which is the second item to be discussed. Expires, um, and the city has paid in full its, uh, bond amounts for that building, they should be included on that deed as a joint order for the building. In the percentage that's been laid out in the contract, so both the contract in regards to its expiration and then renewal. For how that facility should be operated jointly in the future will be up for discussion, in addition to the deed conveyance as well. Uh, the fourth item that's being contemplated is the public transit system. Uh, there have been some, this, this has come up actually several times at the county board level, since I've been with the board, or since I've been with the county. Uh, but it sounds like it's been a, a, an ongoing, uh, sort of similar question for the city for some time as well. And so the city would like to get with the county board to talk about the public transit system joint powers agreement. And in particular, the administration of the local transportation, a system under the joint powers agreement. So there'll be some information that the city's gonna bring to the conversation, that will kind of start it off, and then, uh, and then you all can. Join in on that particular conversation to, you know, see what, uh, what essentially happens. Um, the fifth item of discussion is a transportation update, uh, this has several sub-items to it, the first is, uh, essentially. Uh, there seems to be some question, or maybe in, you know, curiosity, I guess, maybe around the highway tax, you know, sort of. What is the highway tax, how does it get used, uh, what are the projects on the, on the, on the list for the highway, uh, sales tax? And, uh, and such, so, um, our ki- county highway engineer will be discussing, you know, some of the high-level details around the highway tax. And, um, and then also, we thought it would be prudent for the city to share. Its construction-related improvements regarding roadways and such in and around the county. Uh, you know, periphery or for their periphery with the county, and then also for the county to do the same. Uh, there are several projects, as you know, that we coordinate with the city on, and, uh, and so just kind of keeping those lines of communication open and. Keeping the public abreast of what those particular, uh, projects are, is, is prudent as well. Um, I did wanna find, so that's what we had, um, as a suggestion for the draft topics, um. That's a lot to cover in the two or two and a half hours, so, you know, we might not get there, you know, maybe we have to have another meeting at some point in time. Um, I did wanna also address, uh, an issue, or a topic that came up, um. By the board, or at least one board member or, or two, and that was the, the water and sewer project. At the north end of Lake Bemidji, kind of the northwest end of Lake Bemidji, and we've been talking about that for some time. And trying to be, uh, good neighbor and coordinator, facilitator, if you will, with the city and, and northern township, um. I brought that item up to the city, and essentially, they're not prepared for that discussion and are not willing to engage at this point in time. They are willing to engage, uh, in the future, but they're going through some legal inquiries, I'm told. And want to feel more confident and comfortable in what comes of their conversations internally. Before having an open discussion about that particular topic, so we've agreed to postpone that at this point in time. Um, and, uh, and so I just wanted to make that announcement, since some of you had expressed an interest in that topic. So with that, uh, my understanding is that the, uh, acting city manager had presented this topic list. To the city council last night, I haven't heard back, um, you know, if that was favorably considered or not. But I wanted to get your, uh, impressions and more or less blessings, so that we could finalize this. My intention is to go ahead and make the public notice later this week, uh, to give us the, the noticing, uh, period that's required and be in good graces with the statute. So that's what I have for you, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. Couple of things, uh, will we have our staff? Um, people here for backup information purposes?
Commissioner Carlson, yes, we will, um, I've already taken this list and, uh, sent it out to those that I'd like to be here as staff support. And all of them are planning to be here, so we will have the staff needed for the discussion of the topics that have been suggested.
And, and then secondly, how many of us commissioners will be here, I thought I've heard that there was. At least three commissioners that weren't gonna be here.
Um, I know that Commissioner Godzik said he wasn't gonna be here.
I saw an email from Commissioner Gould that said he wasn't gonna be here.
Okay, so that's two.
And then I thought I saw one from Commissioner Sumner, that, that he wasn't gonna be here, so is it possible that the only two commissioners that'll be at that meeting will be. Richard and myself, is that correct?
I know, it's sounding that way. I suppose it's sounding that way, which would suggest that we would want to reschedule a meeting. Uh, because I don't know that it would be productive to have just two.
Well, that's my thought as well.
Right.
I think that, uh, definitely, we should reschedule, that's a, a concern, because, uh. I think we've been in, on the receiving end of some of that, when we've met with groups, and if one person shows up that's in leadership. That's not, that's not a good thing.
Right. Yes, I was aware of the, the one, but it seems two others, so it would be prudent to reschedule, oh.
Well, I guess the question I had is, was there, w- was there a philosophical problem, or was it a scheduling problem?
I may or may not be there, I'm not sure, uh, given some other possible things that are going on that day with my schedule. Um. I would be somewhat interested to see, uh, something related to housing beyond the agenda. Um, you know, there could be some, uh, um, productive. Productive conversations there. But my my concern is for meeting is staff capacity. I would hate to have all of this. Follow up work land on yourself and or Diane, anyone else with the county. You know, the city doesn't have a city manager right now. And until they do. It might make more sense to. Postpone this meeting until they do have a city manager. So. Couple of things on my end with that.
So. The problem is we have a lease coming up. With the law enforcement center.
October, is it October?
August, August.
August.
We have. The jail update I think is important. There's a being on the airport authority and finding out that they don't have bylaws that they're operating under. My thought was, could we make sure that that Karen was at at the meeting on, you know, if we were to have it on May eighth or or whatever, because. It would be nice to hear from her for sure. I mean, I'm under the impression at our meetings that. Because I asked about it, do you have a copy of the bylaws? He said, well, we don't have any. All right, what? How can we? How can we have a joint authority without bylaws? If so, I. But but again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's in our best interest to have. Two county commissioners and seven city counselors, you know, the the balance isn't very good there.
No. I would I would agree. My recommendation would be that we look for another date where the majority of the city council and the majority of the commissioners can attend. I'm afraid Commissioner Gould, to your question, that if we wait till the city manager is reinstated, we could be three to four, maybe. Longer months out. I did ask that specific question, though, of both the mayor and the acting city manager. Giving them an out, more or less, to say we could postpone us until that. Happened and they both said they felt that they wanted to move forward. So. That's the reason we've kept the meeting. And but now with the new development that we're not going to be. Maybe as. That the attendance may not be there for the county board. It makes sense to reschedule that.
Well, Mr. Chair, again, I I request. You know, is it a philosophical problem that we don't have all the commissioners there? Or is it a scheduling problem?
Mr. Chair, for me, it it's rare that I miss a meeting and this just happens to be when I'm. Going to be physically out of state and not able to attend. So it's just, it's not a philosophical thing for me. It's just. Bad, bad timing, bad scheduling for my personal schedule.
Both for me.
So if we were to find another date, then we'd be more likely to, if that works, the date works out okay, then. We can, the the topics to me, especially a couple of them are really. Should be discussed so that it's not a surprise when there's negotiations on either one. But that perhaps could still occur. That discussion prior to this meeting, a public.
Well, and it sounds like if the city and the the mayor and the interim manager are comfortable. I don't know how it's any of our business. To interject whether they're comfortable or not, because they don't have a current city manager. It's not our business. We have county business, they have city business, and we have some business that we need to discuss together and we need to do it soon.
And it's not the city manager that makes the decision.
No.
City council and the mayor that make the decisions.
Although they may have a city manager as early as next month. And we could have the meeting next month.
Again, I agree with Commissioner Gosbick. The city manager doesn't dictate policy for the city. The city council does. And that's why we need to get together with the city council. To determine directions we're going to go with the law enforcement center, with the airport authority. Transportation, all of these things that are important that we do together as bodies.
Yeah, we we're going to look for another date then?
That's a desire of the board. I will look for another date and consult the city on that. In the interim, how does the board feel about the tentative list? I know you mentioned something about housing. I'm concerned that we might be running a little long. In addition, I'm not sure what that conversation might look like if you had something specifically intended on housing or or not. But I'd like to have at least the agenda fairly well tightened up as I communicate this to the city if possible.
How are we with the agenda?
I I would, I would still like to see something on housing. You know, we have a lot of temporary displaced folks out there that, you know. Development projects as far as possible new. Low income housing or or townhouses or single family units. I think it's worth a. A discussion on on goals and objectives as far as upcoming. Housing projects, if there are any besides the. The one that the county received. A grant for, we don't, well, we don't really know exactly what. Those funds are going to be spent on yet, but. You know, we certainly. We certainly have that in common with the city and in the county as far as working on. New development projects and. How can we get more of those going?
We could get H R D C to, they they worked extensively with that. They just come in and give us an update if you're interested in that.
Yeah. Yeah, that that would be.
Trying to cram it in, but this is already a. Heavy schedule to try to get done in two hours.
Well, if we don't get to it, we don't get to it. But, you know, we can always end the meeting whenever we want.
Okay.
Very good. Otherwise, the agenda looks okay.
And maybe are we are we looking at May then, as early as May as we can? Correct?
Yes, I guess I would ask, are there any other blackout dates that the board might have that as I communicate and try to reschedule this? We should kind of avoid.
I wouldn't be available the following month, the fifteenth. But I have to be there, but. Eighth and the fifteenth, but I will not be here.
I think it's important that all five commissioners are there.
Right, right.
Well.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to attend, you know, any day. You know, I try, I travel down here and, you know, forty minutes. I traveled the furthest, you know, from. To get down here from anybody that would be attending the meeting. And I think I've been to a few of these where it's. It's just not worth the time or effort. You know, it's just a Photoshop photo op. Where for me, you know, I mean, a few years ago, we talked about. Some sort of Bemidji pride cleanup things. It just some, you know, these these things just never. Seem fruitful. You know, I I agree with Commissioner Gould about, you know, housing, you know, it bothers me. When, you know, I get text messages, calls, you know, about people's housing and their and the conditions that they live in. And it just seems like we have nothing to offer them, you know. I mean, what what's the point? You know, I mean, if you look at, you know, this picture that I received, you know, from a tenant. You know, that lives just outside of of the city boundary. I think some of your folks would be bothered. So, I mean. Yeah, we could talk about the L E C contract, you know, we could talk about, you know, what what makes us feel good and and whatnot, but. You know, this really doesn't have a. An impact on the people that I represent. So unless there's really meaningful topics and and people really want to roll their sleeves up and and get the. Work done, you know, I'm not going to be there. You know, I appreciate that, that, Commissioner Carlson.
There are no other blackout dates for me. I'm hoping to. Other times.
Okay.
End of the month is tough for me.
End of the month is tough?
Last week, anyway. It's going to be, it'll probably be tough to find something that is going to be compatible with the city as well for for me, but. Maybe what we'll have to do is to move forward with some discussion with the. Small committee of the county and the city to work out the discussion. With both the airport and the L E C. Because I think those are both. Would, you know, would is important to approach and then. Look at, look at a date, but.
So, Mr. Chair, if we can't find a date or if we can't find enough interest from the commissioners to get together with the city, perhaps. We could discuss a strategy of a committee that we would. Put together that would meet with a committee from the city to discuss. The contracts that have to be taken care of. Those are items that we we can't just put off.
Sure. I mean, you are free to develop a subcommittee, like an intergovernmental subcommittee, if you like, and you can use that committee. To do a number of different types of interaction or have a number of different interactions with not just the city, but tribal governments, you know, townships. Other districts, any of that sort of thing, if that's, you know, how you'd like to function.
Mr. Chair. And I agree with Commissioner Sumner in the point of the the previous meetings that I've had with the city. It does seem like there's nothing actionable. It comes to it. I think having some some subcommittees that are actually working. Together on a targeted issue that we'd actually see more actually get done. And so I I like that. I'm not opposed to having us have a meeting, a joint get together and and whatever, but I think that actually getting things done. It could, it'd be better to have a couple of commissioners, a couple of. City council people, administrators, whatever, get together and target, you know, the airport, the law enforcement center. And start getting traction on those topics. So. I'm in favor of that idea.
Well, what I could do is take this back to the city and then I'll just give you a report back the next time we meet on kind of where we're at on things. Sound good?
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Okay, and then we have the jail project update. Hello, Ben.
All right, getting way ahead of myself. Sorry about that. Hello, Mr. Chair, thank Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. I've already clicked through a few slides. Looks like we're a little behind schedule, so I'll try and make this brief and. Give everyone a quick update here on where we're at with the with the jail project. So. Just kind of going through this. We'll just do a quick review of. Of what the process is. Progress to date. And then our next steps in the process. So. I like to bring this up every time we get together. This is the flow chart we're using from National Institute of Corrections. Lot of information here. As you kind of see, I've got a red box here. Highlighted, this is the work. That's generally completed today. So everything that's that's gone on really. Assessing and and determining if there's a need for a project has been completed. We're a little more into the development of the actual facility at this point now, so. With that. Quarterly here, I also like to update the overall schedule for the project. So within the packet you have there and on the screen, we have a two page document. This is the full. Schedule for the project. So you can see anything that's to the left of the red line on that is tasks that have been completed. Anything to the right is work that is yet to be done. See, we've done a lot related to assessment over the course of the last almost year and a half at this point. And some of the other things have been moving along real well. As well. So there's two pages of that and you kind of see there's a lot to the left because there's a long chunk at the end of this that's related to construction. That's where we've been. What I like to do is kind of highlight today a little more what's ongoing and what remains at this point, so. What I did was. Condensed down that overall schedule. To just basically sort for items that are in process or still remain to be completed. And I just kind of zoomed in on it and brought it up on the screen here today. So to highlight some of the things that are currently ongoing right now. You'll see we we have everything sorted by sort of what category they've fallen on the. In the project, whether it's communications, financing, procurement, design, those types of things. Right now, in the financing process, we have some tasks ongoing with that. I'll come back to that in a second. As well as land acquisition. We have some upcoming investigations as well in that area. And then we have the process of getting design on board as well. So related to the financing. You're all aware, we have four bills in at the state of Minnesota right now. Those are going through the whole legislative process. I don't know if there's any. Major updates. Tom maybe has more updates than I do on any of those, but we're hoping to hear back on any of those. By the end of May, we'll kind of have a better feeling for what the state is going to come back with and say. This one or that one or the other are moving forward. With that. We know the big one that is potentially the the. One that could get the financing for the project could be a local option, sales tax, assuming the state puts the blessing on that. You could be seeing the potential vote for that in November. Potentially coming up, obviously the other options with some of the smaller components like eliminating sales tax on the materials. Potentially getting just a an allocation of money for the project. As well, so waiting to hear back on those. Obviously, there's a lot going on in St. Paul right now and. Hopefully, we get some feedback on those things shortly. Otherwise, land acquisition, you as the commission probably know more than I do where that's at at this point, but. That's in process as we know, upcoming shortly here. We're going to have a lot of work to do within our committees here to really. Get all the investigations related to property. Completed. So that may include. But not be limited to. Checking out the soils on that site. Doing phase one or phase two surveys related to any previous developments that may have happened on that site. Taking a look at surveys or any archaeological concerns that may happen on that site as well. And we expect this process to take until roughly to July, sometime in July would be. A ballpark timeframe on land acquisition. And finally. We're currently working to get a concept designer on board. So as of right now, if you look online, we have an R F P out for. Proposals to come from architectural firms. Those are due to me. Next Thursday. I will report that I'm. Seeing a lot of interest. Taking phone calls from companies in Missouri last week, I've heard. Places in Texas are looking at it and I know locally, we've got as many as eight kind of in the Minnesota, North Dakota area that have shown interest. So I expect we're going to have a stack of R Qs like this for the. We shall see. We can hope, right? So we're going to have a whole bunch of those to look at, evaluate and store and then get under contract. The hope is to get them under contract by the beginning of June, probably have a contract for you to review maybe your first meeting in June. Giving them then June, July and August. Work through any of their concepts, programming, space planning, those types of tasks they're going to do. And then to have documents ready, targeting that September first timeframe so that there's. Two months leading up to the potential election in November where we have documents for the public to look at, so. With that, that's kind of the high level look at what's been done, where we're at right now, what we're working on and what we expect in the next few months. So. I guess I would just stand for any questions you may have and if you want me to sit down and move on to other things, I'm happy to do that as well.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I I might be a little heated, but no, I was kidding. I think that we had a jail steer committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, right? And and. I think during those discussions, there was talks about going tour. Did that, did that happen?
So the plan was to go on April fifth. We happen to have some pretty great blizzards that weekend. So as of now. We've rescheduled some of those tours for April twenty seventh. Could be the first tours we do, so. That's another, I guess, task that the design and operations committee. That's another, I guess, task that the design and operations committee is, is undergoing right now. It's really to get a feel for. What other facilities have done, what they've done right, what they may be done wrong, uh, and what could work here. Thank you much. We'll see some of you tomorrow.
Up to you. All right. Got me all excited. All right. No, uh, thank you. I don't have, uh, too much for you this evening. I was going to update you on the HR director position. As you know, um. We are in the, uh, starting, uh, procedures of, uh, hiring Linda's replacement. But fifteen folks apply for the position, uh, ten were screened as meeting the minimum qualifications and six. Were identified as, um, meeting, uh, interview. Uh, standards. So we're going to be bringing six folks into interview. Uh, the interviews are set for Tuesday, April the 25th. They'll be all day, um, with two different panels, a leadership panel and a technical panel. Uh, and I appreciate that Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Anderson will be participating in those. Thank you for that. Uh, moving on, uh, we've looked into the mighty Mississippi cleanup activity. This is, uh, something that, uh. Commissioner Sumner had mentioned for us that we might be interested in. I talked with staff about this. Uh, it's a statewide challenge to clean up the Mississippi River, uh, and essentially, um. We've been challenged, uh, by the, by the organization and. Uh, we have between April 15th and May 15th to organize an event if we are interested in doing so. So I've checked with the environmental services, uh, they're busy with a number of other activities at the moment, including the dirt tree sale and, and some of those sorts of things. Um, but they're going to reach out to the city to see if maybe there could be a joint project that be the city and the county might be able to do. And of course that would allow us to have an opportunity as well to increase the volunteer base, uh, maybe using city volunteers with county volunteers. Uh, so that's sort of in process. I, I can't tell you yet if we're going to do the project, like we don't have a project just yet. But we are definitely looking into it. Uh, and again, we would have conceivably until May 15th to, to try to pull something off. So. Um, just want to let you know that we're working on that. Uh, additionally, we've restarted the daycare discussion. Uh, we did have staff, uh, just, uh, earlier this week, meet, what was it this week or late last week? Um, meet with, I think it was last week, meet with staff, um, from Greater Bemidji, uh, including the operations and strategic initiatives director. Um, who's fairly new to Greater Bemidji. And we are talking about the potential of developing a request for proposals. Um, by which we would then actively solicit, uh, daycare providers to take a, a more, uh, to take an interest essentially. Um, in a number of different facilities, including potentially the county's facility. So, uh, that is something that's in process. Uh, it's not, it's in its very early stages. So I wouldn't expect, you know, for you to see anything. Uh, tangible, uh, in the, in the next several weeks. Uh, but just wanted to let you know that does seem to be an interest certainly of the counties and, and of the boards and that we are. Re-engaging in that particular subject again, try to, uh. Try to get, build some momentum off of that. Uh, we are also meeting, as I mentioned, with business communities, uh, with the business community rather, and, um. We'll be meeting with the Innkeepers Association tomorrow on the jail project, just so that you're aware. Uh, and we also continue to have, uh, more support from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, who's interested in helping us meet with broader membership and also specific, um. Uh, industry-specific, uh, members of the business community as well. Um, so we're continuing to kind of reach out and the sheriff has sent out several, uh, requests, you know, invitations, if you will, for us to come and present and speak. Uh, and is, is getting some traction on that as well. Um, we'll continue to reach out with, to anybody that, you know, is really. Interested in, uh, in the project or willing to listen. Uh, we did, uh, thanks to Commissioner Joe Gould, we were able to get, uh, an audience with senior staff members of the governor's office. Uh, to talk about our jail project. Um, this, uh, meeting will take place Wednesday afternoon, uh, April the 26th. We'll discuss, of course, the jail project, operations, funding and other challenges and opportunities. Uh, we won't have a lot of time, but, uh, at least it's another effort to, to try to reach, uh, the governor with our message. So. Uh, we appreciate Commissioner Gould for setting that up. Then just lastly, a couple, uh, important dates, uh, you want to re- remember that, uh, the Leech Lake State of the Band Address is held. Uh, this Friday, April 21st, at the Northern Lights Casino in Walker from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, also on Friday, April 21st, we'll have a, uh, retirement party. For Mike Miller, who's been with the county for 25 years, uh, that will occur here in the county boardroom from 12:30 to 2:00 PM. And then lastly, uh, kind of an interesting event, the Paul Bunyan Gigazone Tech Expo is on Saturday, April 22nd. Sounds pretty interesting and, uh, something that had been done for at least a little while. It'll be at the Sanford Center and it is free to attend and also free to participate. Uh, so that's what I have for you. I'll stand for questions you might have.
I might be looking for a Mario Kart or a Fortnite partner that day. If anyone's interested.
Thank you.
No, just a quick question, Tom, uh, just out of curiosity, because we brought up the daycare thing. Do we have any idea? I mean, maybe Linda has any idea of how many county employees might need daycare? Uh, which I'm just curious, I mean, because. Maybe there's a broader discussion we can have regarding daycare and, and benefits and, and whatever, but I just, just curious.
I don't believe that we have, come on up, Linda. I don't believe that we have a specific number. I know there's been some work done on, uh, that Ann Lindseth, uh. HHS Director has done in regards to some surveys. Um, Linda, do you have any additional information?
The only thing I can really add is we have employees who are having babies and they are having exceedingly difficult times finding daycare for newborns. Um, to the point of us. Literally having to have them start part-time and they find a half a position here. They're taking their baby in the morning to one place. And moving it to another daycare in the afternoon because there isn't, um, they're having a family member watch it a couple of days a week. I mean, it's just, they're really. Struggling to find daycare for especially those newborns. And I, I get in on that because they're supposed to be coming back from maternity leave and they're saying, I. Really want to come back to work, but, um, I can't. And we've had a couple of people that haven't come back because they have been unable to secure daycare for their children. So. Um, it is definitely an issue that we've lost employees and, and have that difficulty.
How, how hard would it be to enumerate that?
And put the numbers.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I'm just, because I'm serious. I, I, I know Commissioner Goszak has been really concerned about this issue as, as we all are. Um, but, but we have some space that currently needs to be. Utilized and.
I have two right now that are struggling really hard to. You know, that are out right now that are having a hard time presently.
But I mean, more than just two that are struggling, but we must have. Scores of employees that need daycare, don't we? Uh, maybe scores is a big number. I don't know. Or is that an old fashioned number?
I think when we talked about it last, uh, when we were originally talking about having the first floor of the Health and Human Services. Facility, we were looking at the potential of, you know, the county sponsoring, maybe 20 seats. Uh, in that as well as other local businesses that could utilize it. And. That's what I, you know, envisioned was that we could use it as a, as a recruitment tool even for the county recruitment and retention. Tool. If we had a daycare right here and we helped fund or, or create that. It would be a, a tool for us to not only help our current employees, but also recruit new employees.
I mean, that would be something, a survey or something could be done.
We could easily, we could easily do a survey countywide. And I think Health and Human Services has done kind of informal internal surveys for their group. Um, and I will say that there are opportunities like that, Commissioner Carlson, that we're investigating currently with this reboot. For example. Um, our new public health director who you just met this evening has made a proposal on her first week. Um, that is very intriguing. And so, um. She and, uh, the Health and Human Services Director will be working on a, a business plan essentially. To sort of enumerate, as you say, uh, the details of that plan to determine whether or not. We might get into that business because one of the biggest challenges that we've been seeing or, and watching is the loss, uh, providers. Uh, so finding providers to, to provide this service has been extraordinarily difficult. Um, and even though that seems to have stabilized right now a little bit, uh, there has been a significant drop in providers over the last several years. So, um, it's not necessarily just about having the space as it is. Um, meeting the state requirements, which are extraordinarily. Onerous, to be quite frank. And there's been a lot of work at the state legislature to try to modify. Some of the, uh, state statutes surrounding that particular industry to make more, um, amenable the, the childcare model. Uh, we're struggling, I think statewide on this issue. Uh, but I'm intrigued by, uh, what I've preliminarily seen by our new public health director and I'm encouraged. Um, and excited to see how that might, uh, show itself going forward. So, uh, we wanted to give that a little bit of time. That may. May pair nicely with Greater Bemidji's desire to do a request for proposals. So if we can have a county aspect of this. We know that there's interest at Sanford. Um, in fact, they had initially suggested they were willing at the time the previous CEO was there. Would contribute maybe thirty-five sponsored spots, um, to the facility. So we know that there's a need in the community. Um, it's just a matter of trying to get the formula right to then, uh, implement. So as we develop these ideas and, and, uh, they seem, uh. Um, viable, we'll bring them to you and get your input and direction in regards to how to carry them forward.
Okay. All right, we're going to take a, a short break and, uh, get back for the other meeting. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take a a short break and uh get back for the other meeting. Thank you.
We will call the meeting to order. I'll say the flag, please.
President of the United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is too nice. We're hoping to get out and and enjoy that a bit. Um. Are there anyone, is there anyone here that is w- wanting to visit with the board? Address the board? Don't see anyone. How about approval of the agenda?
Uh Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, we have a job evaluation rating. And I betcha Linda is gonna come to the board, to the front.
Good evening, Commissioners, Linda Tran, the HR Director, and I'm here with um four different job evaluation. That have been presented to Baker Tilly for um either updating or for approval, and I would like to go through those real quickly. Um the license and a and election specialist position was revised to be a hundred percent elections, just as Becky talked about earlier. That um the ratings came back slightly higher than what they were under the original posting, but they remain in the same pay grade, which is a pay grade seven. We had a meeting with the union discussing this position, and they're actually meeting in the room next door right now, um discussing this, so. Um I'll have their decision if, you know, that they are in approval with that. We talked to them and explained the entire position. Um and they were going to take it to their membership tonight and should have an an answer back from them um. As well, the lead custodian um was also submitted for review, and this was a new position a couple years ago. So when we have new positions, we put together what we think are their duties are going to be, and sometimes we have to go back and reevaluate that and see if that's really what happened. We put this one together and did a reevaluation of it, and again, like the elections and um license specialist. It came back slightly higher in numbers, but it remained in the same pay grade. Um so we also met with the union on that position and they're um in agreement with um where that is coming in at. The next position that we um had um reevaluated was a communication supervisor. A few years ago, we combined the communication. And supervisor and the emergency management director into one position, and during the budget process last year. Um it was decided that we would split that position into a communication special supervisor and an EM director along with the. POI of a public officer, the Public Information Officer. So we had both of those positions rated um by Baker Tilly, and they're both coming in. Um landing as a pay grade twelve on the um jobs. The um salary schedule, which is um equivalent to where we would have thought they would have come in, but of course, we always go through Baker Tilly and have them go through the full um. Evaluation of them. Those two positions were also rated to make um to determine if they would be exempt or non-exempt, and they both came back as exempt positions. Um under the Fair Labor Standards Act. So I'm here tonight to ask you to approve um the placement of those four positions on the salary scale as presented. And if you have any questions, I would take them out.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the uh job evaluation ratings for the election specialist communication supervisor. Uh Emergency Management Director, Public Information Officer, and Lead Custodian.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair, and then I had a question about the uh um the. Communication Supervisor and Emergency Management, Public Information Officer positions are currently combined. Um are they currently at pay grade twelve, or is this a a step up or down, or?
It is currently a pay grade twelve.
It is, okay.
And by combining or adding that POI and separating those duties, they did both come in at the same pay grade.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh is the Emergency Management Director, the PNP slash PIO, is that is that advertised, or is that is that gonna be in-house um?
Yeah, um Commissioner Sumner, it's not advertised yet. We we wanted to make sure that the board was approving those two positions that they're paying classification before we did any kind of movements of staff or open the positions up. So. It's both, uh so that uh that position is currently vacant.
Okay, so um can you remind me which um? So. Uh Chris Muller is the Commission Communication Supervisor. Is that the the position that he?
Right, so.
Wanted, or or what would be the word?
Right now, he serves as a communication supervisor slash emergency management director.
Mm-hmm.
So the what's being recommended here and you approved in the budget was the separation of those two duties. So we have a communication supervisor. Uh and then we have the emergency management uh director. The the challenge at the time was that the emergency management director wasn't full-time. Uh so that's why we added the PIO, which, you know, Chris Muller kind of currently serves anyways in. Uh you know, it might know he does all the social media posting for the county and press releases and those kinds of things, or at least a vast majority of them. So um now that we have uh the two positions sort of pegged and and marketed. Uh we'll probably go to Chris and eve- and let him evaluate, you know, certainly have to meet the credentials, which presumably he does, because he serves kind of both of those roles. But make sure um, you know, that we give him the opportunity to select which of those two positions he would be interested. And then backfill the other, either with an internal and or an internal slash external posting.
Okay, thank you.
And Chris has not made that, it based on, he had to find this out first before he could make a determination as to which which role he really would prefer to take.
Correct. There was a potential before we did the study that one of those positions would come in at a lower grade, and of course, that would certainly have a financial impact to to him and his family. So. We wanted to go through the exercise first in fairness uh before asking him to select one.
Any other questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thanks, Linda. Okay, legislative and lobbying issues. You start with Joe.
Um not much to report. Uh Administrator Barry mentioned the meeting with the governor, the governor's staff we have coming up. I had a bicap governance committee meeting. Uh that was canceled, uh so we didn't meet for that. Uh unfortunately, I could not attend the regular Board of Directors meeting the next day as I was coaching my final speech meet of the year. That's about it, so.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Um. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I I think there was a couple of me or two weeks ago at our at our last meeting, you know, Brent gave an update and. And I inquired about the the upper and lower Red Lake, one watershed, one plan. Um we had our first meeting yesterday and Red Lake and Drew Straus, and I guess I'm the chair, so. Uh so that was good. It was it was nice. It was a good meeting. I got a Black Duck Ambulance uh meeting Thursday. Um. But because of uh a prior meeting, and I have AMC on Friday, I'm not able to make the ambulance. So I understand that Commissioner Carlson is gonna go uh to the um Joint Powers.
For sure, you're not gonna be able to.
Yep, for sure. So um I appreciate Commissioner Carlson able to to attend. I I think um, you know, when when we have these meetings and on. And are unable to attend, I think it's good for for others to attend. Um you know, that way. Uh we all know, you know, what what goes on and what we do, and and you know, I think the more we know. Uh the better that uh we can serve our our county, so. That is it for my Commissioners' report.
Thank you, sir. Done.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So yesterday, we had the Beltrami County Extension Meeting, and we do have uh. The seat filled. We had a position filled that's been vacant for a while. Um that is the, trying to think of what Kim's title is. And it's support staff, I guess, is what, yeah. And we did find out via uh an email today that we're no longer going to be in. The district that we're in, that evidently um the state, is that the state decides who all of the. Regional supervisors are, and so we were informed that our new regional supervisor will be in Brainerd, so evidently we're gonna be. Were we gonna be, but they didn't send us any maps, so we don't really know exactly how that's gonna shake out, but we're, there's evidently gonna be a little shakeup in in the county extension. Maps, so I think that's, it'll be interesting to see how that shakes out, but.
So. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um had a fair board meeting last night, and things are going really well, um getting a lot of support. Sponsors are stepping up to support the fair and looking forward to. Um kicking off uh again this year with the Beltrami Electric Night at the fair on the first night, where the no gate fee or anything, so. Looking forward to that, and then uh had a solid waste committee meeting this morning, and we discussed the future of our demolition landfill and trying to do some. Some um, you know, planning ahead for that, seeing if we can um come up with um all the, was it nine counties, I think, that we're talking with us? Um it sounds like the future landfill project would would land either in Beltrami County or in Northern Hubbard County. And we're uh just making sure that we're ahead of ahead of the game and not behind eight ball by the time the, you know, we've got quite a few years before our our permit goes or expires for our current landfill, but. Um it's such a long process, we don't want to wait till the last minute, so. Doing that, I think uh Commissioner Carlson's also gonna sit in for me on the Joint Powers uh Board Meeting for the Black Duck Ambulance Service. This Thursday as well, as I will be out of town, I'll be in Minneapolis, so thank you for doing that, Commissioner Carlson, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I attended, of course, the Prime West Meeting. It's the first Thursday of each month, but I also had the opportunity to attend another Prime West Meeting. In Alex on on a Tuesday night, uh dealing with the quality control that they use, and uh. On the way home, I'd kind of lost on my quality control because I was going through the park, I hit a big deer. And so that's uh. Did my pilot in, so. I know, I know.
Uh thank God he didn't have a county car.
Yes, I think I'll rethink that. Uh anyway, with that, of course, we had the extension meeting and a waste management meeting this morning. Tomorrow, we um start looking at our next copy of the newspaper coming up, so if there's some. Uh good news that you want to include in that, make sure that Diane knows, and um we'll go from there. Thank you. Any other bid, uh any other reports or comments people would like to make? Not gonna have a motion.
Marking adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Well, moved. Being noted, four to one.
Yeah.